It is now seven o'clock and I will call the meeting to order. Can I please get a roll call?
Vice President Anderson.
Here.
Counselor Blakely.
Here.
Counselor Forbeck.
Here.
Counselor Keys.
Here.
Counselor Levy. Counselor Prushel.
Here.
And President Duncan.
Here.
There are six counselors present and one absent. We do have a quorum.
Thank you. Counselors, please mute your phones and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, there are no special orders of the day and announcements. So we'll move to item four A under public hearing. It is a consideration of Resolution 2020-143 regarding the vacation of a portion of West Street. And this is Julie Christensen.
At this time, our Community Development Director Julie Christensen will provide us with an overview.
The Planning and Building Services Division received a petition to vacate the unapproved part of West Street right-of-way lying north of Longdale Drive adjacent to 2543 Longdale Drive. This section of right-of-way is sixty-six feet wide and a hundred and eighty-eight feet deep and was dedicated to the public in 1956, but it was never constructed. The applicant is the adjacent property owner who intends to incorporate the vacated area into his private property. The west and north sides of the area to be vacated coincide with the city's boundary with the town of Beloit. Signatures from supportive neighbors were also attached to the report. This went to Plan Commission on September eighth and they voted unanimously six-zero to recommend approval of this vacation.
At this time, thank you Julie, at this time, the public hearing is open. Would the clerk treasurer please provide any public input received?
I did not receive any written input on this item.
Would anyone wishing to speak in favor or opposed, please come forward. The public hearing is now closed. Can I have a motion to approve the resolution?
Nancy Forbeck, I still move.
Moved by Counselor Forbeck.
I will second that.
Seconded by Counselor Prushel. Vice President Anderson, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion? Counselor Blakely.
No, I do not.
Okay. Counselor Blakely, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No.
Counselor Forbeck, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, I do not.
Counselor Keys, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
I do not, thank you.
Counselor Levy, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion? Counselor Prushel, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
I just have one. I could have asked Julie, I guess, at the plan meeting, but I forgot. Exactly how long from start to finish did this process take? I'm just curious.
Julie?
I'm sorry, I assumed I could talk without my microphone being on. So they submitted their application in August and then council introduced it August seventeenth. It's about six weeks, a month.
Oh, that's good. I didn't know how long it took and I would have asked. I thought it took longer. But thanks a lot. That's good to know. Thank you.
I would just like to add that this conforms with our strategic plan, which is goal number three, to create and sustain economic and residential growth. So with that said, at this time, there is a motion and a second to approve the resolution. I will ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Vice President Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Blakely. I'll come back. Counselor Forbeck.
Aye.
Counselor Keys.
Aye.
Counselor Prushel.
Aye.
President Duncan.
Aye.
Counselor Blakely. Counselor Blakely, can you hear me? We may be having some sound trouble and Counselor Levy did not join us yet. So at this point, it is five yes, one I can't hear and one absent. So that does pass. Item five is public comment.
Thank you. We've reached the point on the agenda for citizens to speak to the council about issues that are coming before us or may come before us in the future. Council members may not act on any request at this meeting, but may refer speaker to staff for assistance. We ask that you hold your comments to three minutes or less and refrain from personal attacks of any kind. Public comment is a courtesy and we expect everyone to conduct themselves in a civil manner. Speakers are asked to complete a public comment form or submit an email prior to the meeting. Madam Clerk, were there any public comments submitted prior to the meeting? And we do have-
Yes, Madam President, I do have over twenty. Many of them are short. I will move them as quickly as possible. I just chose them in alphabetical order. The first comment did not have a name, but comes from Fred Flintstone Rules. I was curious, what is the statutory specific reference to enforce any mask mandate or restaurant closing? The second comment comes from Yusuf Tan Odama. In regards to item eleven A on agenda, Rock County has had a dramatic increase in COVID cases in the last few months. This is no small two people not being consistent in their mask-wearing habits. I believe lifting the mask requirement now would lead to more COVID cases and thus it should be extended. Public comment three is from Susan Adams. I wish to add my agreement to many others. Please approve item eleven A on the agenda. Now is not the time to get complacent. Too many people are just ignoring the requirement. How can we be forty percent of the cases with precautions we are taking is very concerning. We went to Door County and though they had requirements in the stores, some people were wandering around in large groups outside maskless. We avoided them. I hear it is spiking there. I worry about Beloit. Kim Carlson says removing the mask mandate during a pandemic while Wisconsin is the current epicenter of COVID outbreaks is reckless, irresponsible, and unacceptable to those of us trying to reduce the spread. Deb Fallon says please approve item eleven A on Monday's agenda. Masks should be worn wherever there are others. Help keep us safe. Anise Rager says in regards to item eleven A, I am a parent and pregnant and I believe the mask mandates are extremely important to ensure the safety of my family and the community from the further spreading of COVID. Dorothy Harrell says members of the Beloit City Council, early this morning, Rock County reported over twenty-seven-hundred COVID-19 cases. This is two-hundred cases more than we had last Monday. This is while our city is doing all it can to minimize the spread of COVID-19. We are almost forty percent of the cases. Obviously, we still need to require places open to the public to meet health and safety practices, including face masks and physical distancing. Please help local eating establishments find a way to comply and remain in business. I am one of many individuals with complications and compromised immunity, so please approve item eleven A on tonight's agenda. Jasmine Hartke says in regards to eleven A, I am a healthcare professional in Beloit, Wisconsin. I believe the mask mandate is very important. This protects all sides regardless an employee or consumer. Please continue with the mask mandate until COVID numbers drastically decrease. Jenny Hoopel says, thank you, council members, for continuing to support social distancing and wearing a face mask. As a store owner, it's a lot easier for me to be able to just say it's city policy and I appreciate all of you for standing up to keep us safe during the pandemic. Steve Howland says, ladies and gentlemen of the Beloit City Council, if it wasn't for the White House, Wisconsin would be the epicenter of a pandemic at this point. I'm sorry, Wisconsin would be the epicenter of the pandemic at this point. So given the current data for Wisconsin, Rock County, Beloit, and the Stateline area, we clearly need to require places open to the public to meet safety and health practices, including face masks, physical distancing, and mass gatherings of over twenty-five people. Please approve item eleven A on tomorrow night's agenda. Thank you for careful consideration to help Beloit be safe. Allison Phillip Lamont jointly say, ladies and gentlemen of the Beloit City Council, early this morning, Rock County reported two-thousand-seven-hundred-and-thirty-four COVID-19 cases, two-hundred more than we had last Monday. While the city is doing all it can to minimize the spread, Beloit has twenty-two percent of the county's population. It shouldn't be closing in on forty percent of the cases. We still need to require places open to the public. In our opinion, there shouldn't be any urgent need to have mass gatherings of twenty-five people. Our family, friends, and neighbors are more important to us than that. Please approve item eleven A on tonight's agenda. Dominique Lemons, dear Beloit City Council, in regards to eleven A, I am a healthcare professional in Beloit, Wisconsin. I believe the mask mandate is very important. This protects all sides regardless an employee or consumer. Please continue with the mask mandate until COVID numbers drastically decreases. Ian Martin says in reference to item eleven A, I believe we should continue to have masks be mandatory in public settings. COVID cases continue to fluctuate in Rock County and show no sign of slowing down. It is in the interest of public health for everyone to take this precaution. Joyce Metter says please continue to keep Beloit safe and continue all the policies you have installed before the prevention of COVID-19. The number of cases keep going up in Rock County, especially in Beloit. We need to be even more vigilant than ever. Face masks and social distancing is not too much to ask of all our citizens. The League of Women Voters Action Chair says city council members, the League of Women Voters of Beloit encourages you to continue Resolution 2021-66. When Wisconsin is experiencing the worst outbreaks of COVID-19 this year, this is not the time to let our guard down. More than ever, we need to continue to use all health measures we can, including the wearing of masks, social distancing, and limiting gatherings. Penny Raybuck says I'm sixty-five years old with a compromised immune system and a lifelong citizen of Beloit. I've always felt it critical to patronize local businesses. We are incredibly fortunate to have unique and exceptional restaurants and shopping opportunities. However, however much I want to support locally, I do not feel safe entering a business that does not require all staff and patrons to wear a mask. I understand those who refuse, believing it infringes on their rights, but I have a right to feel safe. Therefore, I limit my financial support to only those businesses that consider my health by requiring a mask to enter. I would love to be able to safely shop anywhere in Beloit. A simple requirement of wearing a mask could quite possibly increase revenue and definitely spread the feeling that this business cares about me. Alexandra Ramsey says in reference to item eleven A on the agenda, I believe that mask mandates are extremely important. Rock County is seeing more COVID-19 cases. We cannot pretend that this will go away. We as a community need to strive to make sure we are doing everything we can to keep everyone safe. Chantel Rogers says it is being circulated that the mask mandate in our city is to be lifted and I would like to say this is very much unacceptable. Death tolls are on the rise and more than two-hundred thousand Americans infected. The protection of our communities must come before the comfort of a few. To end this mandate would be insanely irresponsible and something no Wisconsinites should be of support. Keep the mandate, save lives. Betsy Schmicken says, please vote to continue the resolution regarding physical distancing, face coverings, and other protective measures remain in place to help minimize the spread of COVID-19 in our community. I am a small business owner and I believe that these protections allow me to keep my business safe and open. If we are forced to close again, it will be difficult to survive. Greg Schneider says, ladies and gentlemen of the Beloit City Council, and then he repeated the two-thousand-seven-hundred-and-thirty-four COVID cases, two-hundred more than last Monday. Still wants to support the mask mandate and keep the policies in place. Erin Wilson says I am writing to express my thanks and support for the continued efforts to keep our community safe. I would also like to express my support for Lori Curtis Luther's Resolution 2020-166 for limited gatherings and for the use of face coverings. If the numbers continue to increase, please consider implementation of further measures. Thank you for your leadership. I appreciate all that you do. And Mark Winslow says in regards to subject eleven A on the continuation of mask mandate, it is critical to our communal and individual protections. This also has been shown to reduce infection rates and lowers the curve. That is all I have, Madam President.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public that submitted a form to address the council this evening wishing to come forward at this time? And when you come forward, I will remind you to please keep your face covering in place. The first person tonight will be Kim Mork. Kim. Can you please state your name and address for the record, please?
Kim Mork, Beloit, Wisconsin. Let's go back to page one of this B-movie script and take note that the purpose of the lockdown back in March was not to stop the virus, but to flatten the curve. You don't hear much about flatten the curve anymore, do you? No, they stopped talking about that after about two weeks into the lockdown. Then the mandates began. It is now six and a half months later and you want to extend yet again a mandate to wear masks. According to the CDC, the survival rates for COVID-19 by age group are zero to nineteen, ninety-nine point nine-nine-seven. Twenty to forty-nine, ninety-nine point ninety-nine, sorry, ninety-nine point ninety-eight percent. Fifty to sixty-nine, ninety-nine point five percent. Seventy plus, ninety-four point six. Medical experts have proven that masks are useless in protecting anyone from viruses and Sweden has proved herd immunity and our own immune systems are the answer. Fauci, the Surgeon General, and the CDC Director actually told the truth back in March when they told everyone masks don't protect you from viruses. Masks are just being used to keep people in fear along with a PCR test that the creator, Carrie Mullis, specifically said was not to be used for diagnosis because it was not quantitative. Depending on how many times the amplification is, everyone can have a positive result no matter how healthy they are. Masks are a placeholder to government eventually forcing people to take a vaccine, to submit to contact tracing and further surveillance and medical tyranny for a pandemic that never materialized. Ignorance is a choice in this day and age. Please tell me that the Beloit City Council members have done some research this time. Before you vote, please view the video on worldwide lawsuits being launched for COVID crimes against humanity. And I've enclosed the email or the address below. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Christine Rowley. Christine, can you please state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, one moment. Good evening, members of the council. Thank you for the chance to speak. My name is Christine Rowley and I live at one-five-one-eight Euclid Avenue here in Beloit. I am against the furthering of mandatory masks in Resolution 2020-166. It is stated that this resolution quote ensures that the city of Beloit is doing all that is possible to minimize the spread of COVID-19 and achieves the goal to quote create and sustain safe and healthy neighborhoods. This virus is nowhere near as deadly as we had originally feared. Statistically, virtually zero percent of our city's population has died with COVID-19. There may be an increase of cases, but thankfully, it has shown to be a very manageable illness that nearly everyone recovers from. I believe requiring the public to wear face masks may actually discourage individuals from considering further actions that could help one's overall health and lessen the severity of possible infection. Perhaps we can see more information educating our community on how people can make sure their bodies are strong and truly healthy as a way of combating the virus. Nearly all people with healthy immune systems overcome this virus. Educating people on ways they can improve their individual health can benefit all people no matter what their age. Each family has their own unique struggles and situations right now. Some have high-risk individuals living with them and every decision can feel draining and difficult. Perhaps we can find real tangible ways to support these people, including helping them brainstorm how they can best protect their loved ones and adjust to the reality that COVID-19 now exists in the world we live in. I believe wearing a mask can give people a false sense of security. We are told we are helping others and ourselves, that it is believed to slow the spread of droplets and thus supposedly make a significant impact on everyone's lives. Many people think they have done their job and then may check out mentally rather than think about how they can strengthen their own immune systems through eating healthy foods and doing healthy activities. It can also make us think, I've helped my neighbor and often not consider what else we can do to tangibly support those impacted the most. Let's step back and view this virus with the proper perspective. We don't need to fear COVID-19. We have all that we need to take care of those who need care. We have no definitive proof that wearing masks is necessary and notably beneficial for the entire city. Please do not further the mask mandate in our city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mike Zorl. Will you please come forward, state your name and address for the record, please?
Mike Zorl, City of Beloit. The city manager exceeded her authority by approving two very large signs in the public right-of-way on Pleasant Street. On September twenty-fifth, I contacted Drew Pennington and expressed I was concerned about the signs because they were a traffic hazard being in the public right-of-way. Only six days later, there was a three-vehicle auto collision within viewing distance of the signs. For the safety of our residents, these signs need to be removed from the public right-of-way. Drew Pennington explained to me the signs were approved under the city manager's authority in Section thirty-point-oh-four-fifteen and Section thirty-point-four-two-two-B-two-A and B. However, these sections do not give the city manager authority to approve these signs and there's four reasons why. Number one, the signs were classified by the city of Beloit as off-premises, special event, temporary signs. But the signs do not meet that definition. I asked Drew Pennington what event Beloit College was advertising with these signs and he said it was welcoming the college students back to class. Frankly, that is absurd. These signs do not mention Beloit. They do not mention college. They do not mention students. And it doesn't even say welcome on it. These are political signs. Number two, the signs are too large. They cannot exceed four square feet based on where they are placed, which is on private property in the right-of-way. These signs are one-hundred-and-forty-four square feet, which is thirty-six times larger than what is permitted. Please refer to Municipal Code thirty-point-four-two-two-B-two-C-two. Number three, there's too many signs. There can only be one sign, not two, because it is not on a corner lot facing opposite streets as required by Code thirty-point-four-two, Section five. The fourth reason, the signs were approved for an illegal time period of one-hundred-and-forty-one days, which is from July twelfth, twenty-twenty to November thirtieth, twenty-twenty. According to thirty-point-four-two, Section seven, signs located in the right-of-way on a public street may only be displayed for the period of time in subsection two-B-two-C-four of this section, which states, "The signs will only be displayed on the day before the special event and will be removed immediately after the event." One-hundred-and-forty-one days is longer than the one day allowed. I find it disgusting and appalling. The city manager has a complete disregard for the laws of our city and I suggest you remove her immediately. If your only employee isn't going to follow the laws of your own council, then you need to terminate her. Furthermore, you cannot possibly expect the residents and businesses within the city of Beloit to comply with the law when the top administrator of the city is explicitly instructing her political friends to break the law. Lori Luther needs to be removed.
Are there any other members of the public that did not sign up that wish to address the council this evening? Can you come forward, please, and state your name and address for the record? And if you could give me that form, that'd be great. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sheila Williams.
Can you state your name and address?
Sheila Williams. And I prefer not to give out my address for public record.
And I hate to interrupt you, but could you please cover your face? Smooth your mask up. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Am I-
Go ahead.
First off, I just would like to say thank you to all of you for your service to the community. I know it can be both a thankless and an undaunting task at times to serve in a position of community leadership, especially now. Some observations from prior meetings that I have witnessed have caused concern not only with myself, but also with many others as well. Ms. Stotler has not been able to remain unbiased when reading public comments. This erodes the public's relationships with their city government. It also has come to my attention that she has deliberately misstated the number of public participants that are allowed in this room to speak. This is my first chance to speak to you in person because of that reason. Because I was led to believe from Ms. Stotler that only a handful of individuals would be allowed in the room. This also erodes the public's trust that you- This also erodes the public's trust. Additionally, I observed when Ms. Luther gave her reasons for extending the mask mandate, not one councilperson asked her a single question of her. She even read a letter from Mayo Clinic that led credibility to her decision to require the public to wear masks. This issue may require more of your time and effort than you had anticipated. The letter she read from Mayo Clinic was simply a generic document from the Mayo staff, not a specific doctor or medical professional. Nonetheless, it was from a hospital in Minnesota, which is quite a ways from here. But the thing I find most disappointing is that there was no medical expert from our local hospital staff either attending or available via phone. One of these experts also serves on the Rock County Health Board. You have many local resources available to give you information of what is really going on in the community with COVID here, but you all choose not to utilize it. Sorry, I have trouble with the mask. If it is not your responsibility to perform the due diligence and ask tough questions of the city manager and other city staff in order to make an informed decision on the mask mandate or anything else related to COVID mandates, then whose is it? I certainly am not able to do it. This is what you were elected to do. I am asking that each of you do your due diligence on critical issues such as these that adversely affect citizens' rights. I am asking that you vote no to any future mask mandates and that this government body works hard to regain the public's trust. works hard to regain the public's trust by not assuming a policing role, but rather an advisory role or an adversary role that gives the public the necessary information they need in order to take any precautions they deem necessary to protect themselves, their families, and fellow citizens from any contagious diseases. Again, I am asking that the council votes "no" to any future mask mandates based on the more accurate and updated information that is available out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public wishing to address the council this evening? If so, please come forward at this time. Public comment is now closed. I have moved Item 11A up on the agenda.
Item 11A is consideration of Resolution 2020-166 related to COVID-19 prevention and control in the City of Beloit.
At this time, City Manager Lori Curtis Luther will provide us with a brief overview.
Thank you. As I have stated many times before, city staff has been working in partnership with Beloit Health System and with experts right here in the City of Beloit. This evening, I have the privilege to introduce an infectious disease specialist, Dr. Sumaraju, who is employed by the city, by the Beloit Health System, and she has been guiding the Beloit Health System's efforts in their response to COVID-19. Before I hand it over to Dr. Sumaraju, who is board certified in internal medicine, board certified in infectious diseases, and also a clinical professor of medicine, I would point out that the data for the City of Beloit specifically, over the course of the past seven days, has drastically worsened. There are 99 additional cases of COVID-19 in the City of Beloit proper. Hospitalizations have increased, and unfortunately, our local hospital does not have the capacity to treat all of the people who could come down with COVID-19 and need medical attention. But rather than hear from me, I will hand it over to Dr. Sumaraju, who has, with her team, been advising the emergency operation center in the validity of the use of face coverings to help minimize spread and to help minimize the severity of the disease. Dr. Sumaraju.
Yes, thank you, thank you for giving me this opportunity to talk about the, what is the importance of masks. So, can you guys hear me well?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So I was just hearing all the comments from the public. There is a mixed feeling about the mask, social distancing, as well as personal hygiene and hand hygiene. So these are the three main factors to prevent COVID-19. So, we feel that with COVID-19, we are in a different lifestyle. Our freedom is gone, our autonomy is gone, our economy is gone. So we feel that this COVID-19 is taking every bit of energy from the societies and the countries, and in fact, the entire world. So, we don't have any, at this point, we don't have any effective treatments, whatever the treatments we are giving, our experimental treatments, and you all know that there is no effective vaccine yet. So the only way we can prevent COVID-19 at this point is wearing a mask, maintaining social distancing, and washing your hand hygiene. These are the three main factors to prevent the COVID-19 infection. So you may ask me questions, why we have to wear a mask? What is the need for this mask to prevent COVID-19? So COVID-19 is a droplet infection. When we are talking, right now, I'm not wearing a mask because I'm all by myself in this room, there is nobody else is here. So while I'm talking and spilling out so many droplets, infectious droplets, if I happen to be a COVID-19, then I'm just spilling out all the COVID-19 virus. So patients can be, or people can be asymptomatic, still they can spread the virus by talking. If you have cough, sneezing, or any of those activities like, you know, touching your nose, not cleaning well, you're actually getting all the virus particles on your hands. So when you're doing all these activities, the person next to you is inhaling all the virus. So asymptomatic person can spread the virus. So if you wear a mask, you are protecting yourself, as well, you're protecting somebody who is next to you. Especially if you are in an environment where you cannot maintain a social distancing, you should be more careful in wearing a mask. Make sure that works properly, it is worn properly. So I see on the streets, people are wearing a mask, which is just sitting on their chin or hanging from one ear, or, you know, they are not even paying attention, where is this mask going? But it's not on the right, right part of your nose or mouth. So wearing a mask, you will prevent infection to yourself, you will prevent spreading or transmitting infection to others. And if you practice this mask 24/7, when you're up and around in public, if you are wearing those things, actually, you can improve the economy. You can't be going to a restaurant not wearing a mask and spreading the virus. You believe it or not, when we speak and the person is gone, the virus is still, is lingering in the environment. So you are, nobody is there, but you know, virus is lingering there, like, it depends, the time duration of the virus, which can linger in the environment, varies from place to place. If you are in a crowded place, it can linger for a longer period, 20 minutes, 25 minutes. If you are in a, in a place where there is, you're spilling all your virus onto the countertops, it's got, it could be there for several hours on the countertops. So the virus is lingering around your environment longer than you expect. You don't have to be having a person next to you coughing or sneezing. So if you're not careful enough in wearing masks, that, all the virus is lingering in the environment, you are just inhaling. And if you have any of those, you know, comorbidities like hypertension, diabetes, or any other immunosuppressive disorders, you are going to pick up more infection and serious infection. Yes, I agree, majority of the people are getting out with minor symptoms or they are recovering, but at the same time, you are living in a community where you have different age groups, and you don't want to spread your virus to others. And there is a vaccine they are talking about, we don't know how soon it's going to come, and even if we have a vaccine, we should be practicing all these preventive measures until we get a clear signal that there is a community with herd immunity. You heard about this herd immunity from several resources, that means 80% to 90% of the people are immune for the infection. Just in my experience, I can tell you something that will help you to realize what is the importance of wearing a mask. For example, so we have this flu season, you all know about the flu season, which goes from October to April, and sometimes last few years, even it extended to May and also to June, because we still had lingering patients admitting to the hospital with influenza A or B infections. But you believe it or not, this year, we did not have that many infections admitted to the hospital. The reason for that is your hand hygiene, social distancing, so definitely, these are helping. We have seen that in our, with our eyes, that that helped the people who get the flu infections, the elderly patients, nursing home patients, they did not come to the hospitals, they had less number of infections, not only with our hospital, I think the entire nation realized that this year, we have less influenza patients than previous years. And not only that, in, like, in the past, there are several, several pandemics we had, and the biggest one is in 1918 flu season, they all practiced the same things, what we are doing preventive measures, like masking, hand hygiene, social distancing. So we practiced this in the past, and we need to practice this now to prevent this COVID-19 infection. Until we get a situation where we are winning the race, until then, I think we have no other choice than maintaining whatever we are doing, the preventive measures. Any questions for me?
I have one.
This is not...
Just a second.
She's speaking to the councilor, sir.
Oh, I didn't know that. She didn't say she was speaking to the council. Ask, if anyone had a question. I have a question.
He's out of order.
Not yet, we got, Greg, just a moment, please. Greg, can we please ask you to wear a mask, please? Do you have a notice?
Counselors, I believe that Dr. Sumaraju was asking if any of you have any questions of her. Before we move on, perhaps you would like to ask for a motion?
Yes, I'm gonna take a motion, and then I'll take questions from counselors. At this time, can I please have a motion to approve the resolution?
Nancy Forbeck, I still move.
Move by Councilor Forbeck, is there a second?
Second by Levy.
Second by Councilor Levy. Now we will take questions and discussion from counselors, beginning with Vice President Anderson. Vice President Anderson, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No questions, but I do just have a couple comments. First off, I will be promptly voting for this. We need to do everything we can to stop the spread. And with 210,000 people dead in this country and 33 in our county, I'm not willing to sacrifice any more people for something we can stop spreading. We need to wear masks, and I know people are arguing that they don't work. Wear your mask, and we'll find out. The same people who say masks do not work are the ones that are refusing to wear masks, full stop, end of comments.
Councilor Blakely, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
I really appreciate hearing from the doctor, from an articulate medical professional about the matter. I know there are questions in many people's minds about whether or not masks have a positive effect, but I have no argument with where the medical community stands on this. So I appreciate people making what amounts to a relatively small effort to help maintain their own health, the health of their loved ones, and the overall health of our community. Thank you.
Councilor Forbeck, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
Well, just a comment, I guess. Because we are concentrating on masks, but along with wearing a mask, we have to be careful about distancing also, and about not getting into crowds. And this has really struck home with me since the last council meeting we had, because I now have my first very good friend who has come down with COVID. And I'm telling you, it was the typical kind of thing where it just took about an hour of being close with somebody without a mask, and nobody knew that the one person had it at the time, but now both these people have been very, very ill. So, I mean, who would make this up? For heaven's sake, let's come together as a community and do everything we can. Thank you.
I just want to add one comment, that was a very nice way of putting it. Everyone has to do their part, we all are in together, and if you do your part, social distancing, masking, and hand hygiene, and frequently touch surfaces, clean them, if you do your part, I think that is a big favor for the community. It's not only for you, it's all, it's all for the community, and you know, we can prevent a lot of infections. We hear so many stories from the patients, how they got it, what happened, and basically, there is a breakdown in their protective measure. We can see that, that is where some patients got into the trouble. So I think mask is the one which proved again and again in the literature, in infectious disease literature, that is important for prevention of any droplet infection, any droplet infection. So more so now with COVID, because COVID is believed to be a little more infectious, and we don't know much about this virus. So I think maybe a year from now, we would know more about it to prevent it without wearing a mask, I don't know at this point, but until we know we have is definitive cure and definitive way of preventing this, I think this is all we can do at this point. Thank you, though.
Thank you. Councilor Keys, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Dr. Sumaraju. I have a question, I greatly appreciate your expertise. My question is about hospital capacity, kind of reflecting locally, as well as in Wisconsin. We're seeing that hospitals in the northeast region of Wisconsin are becoming overwhelmed and pushed near capacity, and that's what we all sacrifice for, to prevent, and that's what we're working to prevent here. So would you mind speaking to that statewide, as well as locally?
Yes, definitely, we are seeing a spike, we are calling it as a second wave, and typically, the second wave happens usually four to six months into any pandemic, when it begins, four to six months into it, then the second wave comes. And definitely, we are seeing the second wave in our hospital also, especially with the schools opening, colleges opening. So all that is playing a role, and definitely, you know, there is a second spike. At this point, we are able to manage our patients within our hospital at this point, even though we are, numbers are increasing. So we are able to manage, but as you said, there could be time that we, it will be to their maximum, to our maximum capacity to organize or take care of these patients, then we have to come up with different units, or even the community shelters turning into, you know, makeshift hospitals, or schools, or all those things. So I think, I think our hospital has a plan for that, I think every hospital in this crisis have their own plans, every institution. So I think every institution has a plan in place. So, but definitely, we are in the second wave, because I see that for the last three, four weeks, our numbers are going up.
Thank you for speaking to that. I also have a comment, that was my question, thank you. As a, I am a healthcare professional myself, an employee of Beloit Health System, and I just want to share and reassure the public that I take the skills that I learned to earn my doctorate, and that I take in all the information that is presented to me, as well as the resources from Wisconsin Department of Health and Rock County Department, and I've done extensive review of the literature as well on the use of masks and precautions. So everyone on this council definitely comes with their strengths. The City of Beloit has done an excellent job with the leadership in taking these precautions seriously this whole time, and I truly believe that the implementation of these basic pandemic control precautions has been helpful in keeping us at a relatively, I mean, 8% positivity, I hate to say, is stable, but relative to statewide positivity of 17, we are doing relatively better. So I really encourage everyone in the community to continue to apply these precautions to keep our... Thank you. Thank you.
Counselor Levy, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, I do not.
Counselor Prushel, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
Well, I just want my usual one. Um, I, I think contrary to protestations that may say that we don't, I, every, every time that this comes before the council, I ask the same question. Are we doing anything substantially different than what the state or the county has mandated already? And I understand we don't, because what this is just to localize the jurisdiction. Put it in clear terms. Lori could clarify that for me. Um, I, as a comment, I will also add that I don't mean dismiss the protestations against mask mandates and stuff. I will not so easily dismiss one single life affected by COVID-19. And therefore, we can do these simple things, we should do these simple things, and if that's what it takes for the time being, we shall keep doing it. And, um, I appreciate all the comments from everyone, especially from those in support of doing the right thing by our community. Simple, easy-to-do things. Let's keep it up and just do what we need to do to be kind to the rest of our community. For that, Lori wants to say a thing. Thank you.
Not right now, Greg. We can't have that during councilmen. You'll be asked to leave. Greg, you'll be asked to leave. First, I want to begin by saying that I appreciate all the public comments and welcome them during our public comment forum. However, it is important that we pass this resolution. This evening, we heard from Dr. Samiraju, who is an infectious disease specialist from Beloit Health System, and she explained to all of us the safety precautions for us to be safe. And that includes wearing a mask, social distancing, good hand hygiene, and frequently cleaning surfaces, along with information that was provided to us from our city manager. We have a pandemic that we must slow the spread of, COVID-19, and, and, and an upcoming election where we will have poll workers, volunteers, and city staff working. We cannot afford to put our vulnerable population at risk. As a council, we must do all we can to put the safety and lives of all of our residents first. So, with that said, at this time, there is a motion and a second to approve this resolution. I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Vice President Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Blakely.
Aye.
Counselor Forbeck.
Aye.
Counselor Keys.
Aye.
Counselor Levy.
Aye.
Counselor Prushel.
Aye.
President Duncan.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. The agenda item six is the consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member saw a request in which event the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered at this point on the agenda.
Just a second. Can we have clarification from our city manager Luther, please?
I just wanted to mention, uh, thank you, Dr. Samiraju, for joining us this evening. While you are more than welcome to listen to the remainder of the meeting, you are also, um, understandably, uh, probably busy with other things. So, uh, we understand if you need to attend to those now, but thank you.
Thank you very much for having me, and I'm the resource for the Beloit Health System. Any of you can call me. Everybody knows how can be, how I can be reached. You can, you know, talk to anybody in the Beloit Health System. They can tell you that how to, how to reach me. Um, available resource for you guys, so don't hesitate to call me if you need any help.
Thank you so much.
And on behalf of this-
Thank you very much for having me.
And on behalf of the city counselors, we, uh, thank you, Dr. Samiraju.
Thank you.
And thank you for serving on the front line. We truly appreciate it.
Thank you. Have a good night. Bye-bye.
Have a good night. Would any counselor like anything removed from the consent agenda? Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, including items 6A through 6J?
This is Counselor Prushel. Yes.
Move, move by Counselor Prushel. Is there a second?
Counselor Blakely, second.
Second by Blakely. At this time, there is a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Are there any questions or discussion? I would just like to add, in regard to item 6I, the expenditures from the grant will supply us with tools and resources to administer the, the November 3rd election and beyond, which will make us more efficient. Next, I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Vice President Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Blakely.
Aye.
Counselor Forbeck.
Aye.
Counselor Keys.
Aye.
Counselor Levy.
Aye.
Counselor Prushel.
Aye.
President Duncan.
Aye.
That passes unanimously. Under item seven licenses, there are none. Under item eight ordinances, item 8A is consideration of ordinance number 3684, amending the zoning, zoning district map from R1B, Single Family Residential, to PUD, Planned Unit Development, for the property located at 202 Maple Avenue, and from PLI, Public Lands and Institutions, to PUD for properties located at 1500 Shore Drive and a portion of 1459 Sixth Street. This is second reading.
Thank you. This is the second reading, and our community development director Julie Christensen is here to address any questions. And first, let's take a motion. Can I have a motion to approve the ordinance, please?
Counselor Keys, I still move.
Counselor Keys, uh, moved that. It was seconded by Counselor, uh, Prushel, I believe. Was it Forbeck? Counselor Forbeck? Okay, so let me clarify that for clarification. We have a motion by Counselor Keys, a second by Counselor Forbeck. At this time, if there are no questions, we will take questions or, uh, discussion from counselors, beginning with Vice President Anderson. Vice President Anderson, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, none at this time.
Counselor Blakely, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Counselor Forbeck, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
I, yes, I do. I just have a question. Um, I'm sure that they have to have a capital campaign for this, but I'm wondering, Julie, do you have any idea about when they, um, they have, uh, a year to start this?
My understanding is they were going to start this year, but I honestly don't know where they are with their capital campaign.
Okay, thank you so much.
Counselor Keys, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
I do not. Thank you.
Counselor Levy, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, I-
Counselor Prushel, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, I do not.
At this time, there is a motion and, and a second to approve the ordinance. I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Vice President Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Blakely.
Aye.
Counselor Forbeck.
Aye.
Counselor Keys.
Aye.
Counselor Levy.
Aye.
Counselor Prushel.
Aye.
President Duncan.
Aye.
That passes unanimously. Item 8B is consideration of ordinance number 3685, to amend section 15.30 sub 1 and sub 2 of the Code of General Ordinances of the City of Beloit pertaining to forfeitures for possession of 25 grams or less of THC and possession of drug paraphernalia. This is second reading.
This is the second reading, and city manager Lori Curtis Luther is here to address any questions. First, let's take a motion, and can I please have a motion to approve the ordinance first?
Vice President Anderson will move.
Move by Vice President Anderson. Is there a second?
Counselor Prushel will-
Second by the coun-
Second by Counselor Prushel. Now, we'll take questions and discussion from counselors, or questions. Vice President Anderson, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
Uh, no comments, but just once again, thank you, staff, for working on this. I really appreciate it.
Counselor Blakely, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
I too appreciate the thoroughness of the report we've gotten on this. The report, reports plural, we have gotten on this matter. I think it's moderate, and, um, thank you.
Counselor Forbeck, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
I just have, I guess, a question. Um, is part of why we're doing this now is just like we're doing with a lot of other things, tightening up so we have the same statute as the state? Or was this also, um, brought up by our public in Beloit? I guess I just don't know about this.
Thanks for your question, Counselor Forbeck. We will have, uh, city manager Luther to answer that question, please.
Thank you. So it was a combination of things. I was approached by Vice President Anderson, um, who had received, uh, some input from the public with some questions and concerns. We then conducted some research to look at, uh, how the city of Beloit compared to other communities. During that process, we recognized that the code of ordinances, while properly executed by the judge, uh, and the municipal court process, had a dated, um, fee structure that was inconsistent with the statute. So this was an opportunity to do a combination of the above, respond to some citizen concerns, uh, be sure that we had the ordinance compliant with statute, and, uh, respond to counselors' request.
Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Keys, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
I do not. Thank you.
Counselor Levy, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, I do not.
Counselor Prushel, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
I just, an observation comment. Um, I received absolutely zero feedback from the public about this vote, about this measure, which kind of surprised me, considering, uh, current events and, uh, and I also want to remind everybody who cares, if they do, uh, that the real change on this kind of laws is going to happen at the state and federal level, and there's really nothing more than a gesture or, you know, a little tweaking here and there like we've done, that we can do at our level. And, um, the real change will happen at the state and federal levels. So thank you. That's all I wanted.
Thank you. At this time, there is a motion and a second to approve the ordinance. I will ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Vice President Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Blakely.
Aye.
Counselor Forbeck.
Aye.
Counselor Keys.
Aye.
Counselor Levy. Counselor Levy?
Aye.
Thank you. Counselor Prushel.
Aye.
President Duncan.
Aye.
That passes unanimously. This evening, there are no appointments, so that brings us to item 10, which is Counselor Activities and Upcoming Events.
And when we, before we begin, if counselors have committee updates they'd like to give along with their reports, that'll be fine. We'll begin with Vice President Anderson.
Thank you, Madam President. I just really want to make one comment. Uh, over the last weekend, I showed symptoms of COVID-19 and got a test immediately. Thankfully, it was negative, but this is just a friendly reminder to everybody to wear your masks, be safe, and if you show signs and symptoms, get tested. I got my test at the Alliance Energy Center up in Madison. Yeah, I got my results in less than three days, which was really nice, because I was, uh, isolating, so that was not a good time. But it's the things like that we have to do for our community and our friends and family. We should all be willing to make those sacrifices. Let's be better neighbors, and let's make sure we're doing everything we can to stop the spread of COVID-19. Thank you.
Counselor Blakely.
Thank you, Madam President. As a member of the, uh, library board, the municipal library board, I just wanted to share with people that the Blender Cafe at the library is going to be open from 7:30 AM to 2 PM, Monday through Thursday, uh, for the time being. Hours may lengthen in the weeks ahead, and we'll let you know when that happens. I want to urge everybody just to hold on to their hope for a better future. When I'm feeling worried and stressed by all that is going on around us in the United States and around the world, but especially here at home, I turn to history sometimes for some reassurances and comfort in the fact that we have gone through serious troubled times before, and I feel positive that we will get through this too. I have a brief quote for you by Eleanor Roosevelt to help inspire us. She wrote about the subject of hope. Surely, in the light of history, it is more intelligent to hope rather than to fear, to try rather than not to try. For one thing we know beyond all doubt, nothing has ever been achieved by the person who says it can't be done. And one other reminder for all of us is to be sure to vote. Um, you are able to vote absentee right now, and soon you'll be able to vote early in person, and then, of course, there's Election Day just around the corner, November 3rd, where you can vote at your local polling place. Um, here's one more quick quote, and then I'll stop quoting other people and shut up for the night. This one comes from President Abraham Lincoln. Elections belong to the people. It is their decision. If they decide to turn their back on the fire and burn their behind, then they will just have to sit on their blisters. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Blakely. Counselor Forbeck.
I'm sorry, I was chuckling at that. Um, I just want to say that I want to give really, um, some kudos to the superb staff of the Community Development Authority that I have the good fortune, uh, to, uh, sit on. Um, for people who don't know sometimes what goes on in the city, it is our responsibility to be really responsible with federal funds that we get. And, um, we have so many good not-for-profits that vie for the needed and, of course, never enough, federal funds. And, um, I think that people need to know that we have wonderful, caring, uh, not-for-profits that are very active and very proactive in helping our citizens. And so, this has been wonderful for me to learn about all of them, and, um, part of why we do such a good job is, uh, our great staff on that, uh, committee. So thanks. That's all.
Thank you, Counselor Forbeck. Now, Counselor Keys.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I have no commission update, um, but I was able to participate in, um, the courageous conversation, uh, last, I believe it was just last week, um, that was surrounding justice and policing, and, uh, little representatives from, um, different communities were there, uh, from their law enforcement, and Captain, I appreciate, really, uh, very much appreciated, uh, Captain Sales and his, um, leadership- Captain Sales and his um, leadership and participation there. My announcement is that this Wednesday, there is a candidate forum for Beloit State Assembly Representatives, so it'll be held virtually Wednesday from 6:00 to 8:00 PM for the representatives for District 45 and 31. And this is just another great opportunity for people to listen, learn and ask questions. And I want to just thank the, recognize the sponsors of the League of Women Voters of Beloit and the League of Women Voters of Janesville, the Beloit NAACP, the Beloit Chamber of Commerce and Wisconsin Health Professionals for Climate Action, um, for helping to continue inform, educate and empower voters, especially during this challenging time. That is all, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Keys. Counselor Levy.
No report.
Counselor Pruschel.
Uh, stick with the commission reports. Um, the Plan Commission had a pretty full slate in September and it looks like they're starting October with another full slate on this, for this Wednesday's meeting. Um, this is an opportunity for people to uh, look at those documents and uh, attend the meetings to uh, to if there's hearings on it before it comes to the council. It's good to get that stuff ironed out in those commission meetings. Um, the Traffic Review Committee has, did not meet again, hasn't met in one year now as of October. And hopefully, we'll get that committee rolling. Uh, there's plans of what to uh, reexamine uh, how it's organized and what it's, how it's constituted in purpose. I think there's a need there that we need to uh, to work on and we're doing that. It's, it's taking a process. At the visible Beloit Board, uh, the deconstruction of the Angel Museum's uh, property is continuing. Uh, it's uh, basically demolition internally now to uh, get it ready for remodeling. Um, some tweaks have been needed because of the budget constraints they're under. And that leads me to my next thing, uh, as of our last report at the visible Beloit Board meeting, uh, tourism revenue from the hotel occupancies is down, I think it was 56% um, at still. Uh, there's been a little improvement, but it's not bouncing back as quickly as uh, some of the other option, you know, operations are. The tourism industry, hotel, everything is still heavily hurt by this pandemic. And uh, that's uh, that necessitated the reexamination of some of the first phase remodeling at the former Angel Museum site, but uh, things will get done. And um, I did notice that the uh, Riverwalk path looks like it's going to get done in time for the October opening, I think that's what I originally heard, this is October. Uh, we got plenty of October left to get that done, um, and uh, checked it out the other day, it's, it's looking really good. Um, I still can't believe it, it actually got done. I mean, it's an amazing project when you think about what it took to put that simple path along the river. But uh, it's, it'll be awesome, I think people are going to love it and uh, uh, so that's it for me, that's um, that's all, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Pruschel. And now my councillor comments. First, I want to mention that October is the time that we bring awareness to indigenous people, breast cancer, domestic violence and Down Syndrome. Our council wholeheartedly acknowledge these issues and will continue to support them. I also want to give special thanks to all the frontline workers, including healthcare providers, first responders and all city staff who are working hard throughout this pandemic. Please know that you are appreciated. And heartfelt thanks to United Way, Mary Fanning Penny and Alliant Energy for their donation of a Bourne Learning Trail at Turtle Creek Park. This will certainly enhance our park and provide a free opportunity for Beloit families to boost children's literacy while having fun. And this fits perfectly with the work that we're doing with the Beloit Literacy for Life Initiative as we continue to improve Turtle Creek Park. So thank you, United Way, Alliant Energy and City Manager Lori Luther for your efforts. I also want to give a shout out to Marlene Holmes and all the volunteers who've been assisting the city clerk with important job of processing absentee ballots and thank them for being part of our team. It is critical that we make our voice heard through our vote. I voted and posted it on Facebook and we have two ballot box, drop boxes right here at City Hall. Next, regarding my councillor activities, I was proud to join the city manager on Saturday, September 26th for the street renaming in honor of the Mumford Point Marines to pay tribute to the African-American Marines who enlisted to serve the United States during World War II. My grandfather served in the military during that time, so this momentous event meant a great deal to me and I'm very grateful to our councillors for helping to preserve their legacy and for making this possible. I also attended the Appointment Review Committee meeting. If you're interested in putting your talent to good use, please visit the city's website for vacancies. If you should need more information, please feel free to contact the executive assistant, Pam Lether, at 608-364-6614. In addition, I highly encourage members of the public to please go online to the city of Beloit website and sign up for the Beloit Report. There's lots of information regarding Fire Prevention Week, the election, the United States Census 2020, staff updates and much more. And speaking of staff updates, the Beloit Police and Fire Commission has named Beloit Police Inspector Tom Stigler as interim chief, so congratulations to him. Our department and community are in good hands. In closing, I want to say that I am very saddened by the spark of violence in our community and heartbroken to hear about the injured individuals and the loss of life of a 26-year-old mother, Chelsea Payton. This must stop. If you see something, please say something and please keep Chelsea's family and all of those suffering in your prayers. These incidents are so tragic and impact our entire city. I ask that we all come together to strengthen our community and choose to spread more love. Thank you. Next, item 11, the city manager does have another brief presentation and I thank you.
I do have an announcement this evening. Uh, this is hot off the press. A year ago, on October 9th, 2018, it was announced that one of the future littoral combat ships of the United States Navy would be named USS Beloit. And at that time, uh, the first commissioned ship in naval service to be named after Beloit. It is now under construction in Marinette, Wisconsin. And we received notification from the state of Wisconsin that in honor of USS Beloit that is currently being built, this Friday, October 9th of 2020, will be officially USS Beloit Day in the state of Wisconsin. So we thank the governor for the recognition. I will be sending copies of the official proclamation and they will also be issuing a press release. This is a wonderful opportunity to celebrate um, not only the importance that Fairbank Morse has had in building these littoral uh, combat ship engines since World War II, perhaps before then frankly, um, but also to recognize uh, our community and uh, the continued importance of supporting our veterans and our current uh, individuals in the military. Uh, this is a great honor and um, thank you for allowing me to share that announcement.
Thank you, City Manager Luther. And that is such wonderful news. Thank you.
Under item 12, reports from boards and city officers. Item 12A is consideration of resolution 2020-141, adopting the city of Beloit Water Pollution Control Facilities Plan.
Next, we'll have our Director of Water Resources, Bill Frisbee, to provide us with an overview, please.
You have before you tonight, uh, for your consideration, a resolution adopting the city of Beloit Water Pollution Control Facility Facilities Plan. Uh, the city hired Strand Associates in early 2019 to begin a thorough evaluation of the water pollution control facility, um, which is also known as our wastewater treatment plant. The purpose of the evaluation was to be proactive and identify any needed repairs, equipment replacements and upgrades to ensure continued compliance with current and projected future discharge limits. Strand worked very closely with our wastewater operators, maintenance specialists and management staff to develop a plan that would ensure compliance with future DNR requirements and be easily operable and maintainable. Uh, this plan was previously presented to you at the September 7th City Council meeting and we held a public hearing at that time. Uh, written comments were submitted up until September 21st and I did receive six written comments on the proposed facility plan. Um, I'll read those in a minute, but uh, just to cover, the plan recommended about $42.8 million worth of upgrades and these are planning level estimates. Once we do design work, we'd be able to narrow in. Planning level estimates usually have a bit of a contingency built into them, but the upgrades recommended is our biosolids handling going to sludge drying for $13.8 million, uh, UV disinfection for $3.1 million, aeration expansion and upgrades to the existing uh, blower system is $15.2 million, a new odor control system, $1.8 million and some common upgrades of $8.9 million, which is just replacing equipment in kind for another very similar piece of equipment. Our plant next month will be 28 years old. A lot of the equipment is original pumps and motors despite the great effort from our staff to maintain it, some of that equipment is just past its useful life and in need of replacement. And then I'll, I'll read the, the six written comments that we did receive and they are included in the facility plan document. Can I get to the right page here real quickly? And these comments are in no particular order. Um, the first one is from Joshua Miller, to whom it may concern. With currently looking for a home in the city of Beloit, I am awestruck to hear that the people of Beloit could be responsible for upgrades needed to the water supply system when increased industry is the reason for such an upgrade. How this falls on the individuals blows my mind and even with an increase over a five-year period, my wife suggests looking at homes across the border. Sincerely, the Millers. The next one um, is from Liz Cardenas. Per the presentation, you, the city of, you, the city of Beloit Council, want the people of Beloit to pay to upgrade the system due to increased water demand from industrial users. In other words, this is a corporate welfare scheme, siphoning money from the people and handing it over to big corporations via your water bill. This is exactly what the city is doing to its residents, cheating us for their corporate interests. For Melf, Frito Lay, Staples, Kettle Foods, they consume huge amounts of water 24/7, 365 days a year. They need to pay for this upgrade. Another huge point is the fluoride put in the water. It is petroleum waste. I thought this was supposed to be the greatest country in the world, yet we can't even choose not to have poison put in our water. If the city is disposing waste in the water and I'm forced to consume it and pay for it, then do I not deserve cheaper water? The city gets paid to dispose of garbage, yet the city is forcing me to consume garbage and pay for it. If the system is upgraded, there is no reason they can't upgrade it, so South Beloit, per the corrupt state law, only have it in their water supply. The city of Beloit Council allowing the corruption of businesses before its people is just plain sick and wrong. The food factories in this town consume massive amounts of water, they need to foot this bill. America, land of the free, doesn't apply anymore when the city is forcing chemicals down the citizens of Beloit throat. Another way to look at it is a great marketing for Beloit. Think of the publicity Beloit would get saying that they allow their residents to choose water without fluoride. It's a very progressive view. We don't need fluoride in the water, Dennis all over Beloit provide fluoride treatments to everyone if they feel they need it. They provide fluoride, dental varnish that people can choose. People think of your residents and help us. Please make the moral decision and vote for your residents to have safe, clean drinking water without sacrificing your livelihood. Make the corporate interest in this town pay for their part if they are part of our community. Uh, third comment is from Mary Ann Sveum. We are asking the city's Water Resources Department to not implement this increase to our water rates. This information just recently revealed is shocking. Our rates are high enough now. This increase is supposedly caused by a need to improve and/or expand the facilities and equipment we have now, but our residential numbers have not grown, so the need must be due to added business growth. Beloit citizens should not be forced to pay for the improvements when they will see no benefit. Our property taxes will not go down because of this, so we will only see the increase. That's just not right. Stop raising our water and sewer rates and stop tacking all of the added fees and taxes. Enough. Robert and Mary Ann Sveum, city of Beloit residents. Um, the fourth one is from Dennis Gilbert Jr. He says, this is Dennis Gilbert, I live in Beloit and would ask you, please not bill the people for business need. Corporations are much more able to pay for those upgrades than myself, I know that for sure. I could understand if it was a residential need, but let the corporations pay for their needs. Aside, 17 and a half percent increase isn't in, isn't in my opinion affordable to most people, especially going through this pandemic. Thanks in advance for your time and consideration, respectfully, Dennis Gilbert Jr. Uh, the next one is from Mike Zorro, 1756 Carlyle Road, Beloit, Wisconsin. I oppose changes to the Beloit water utility that would result in rate increases. While I understand there are some energy efficiencies to be gained, total efficiency goes down if cost goes up. If the system is supposed to become more energy efficient, it should cost less money overall, not more. Furthermore, Beloit population is and has been stable a long time. We have some recent increases in business industrial users that are creating an additional demand for water resources. Therefore, the cost of increasing and upgrading the equipment should be a cost burden on business only, not the residents of Beloit. Lastly, I do not want fluoride in my drinking water. I have been opposed to this for 10 years and was told the reason Beloit has fluoride because Beloit supplies water to South Beloit, Illinois, where they have a state law that mandates fluoride, even though Wisconsin has no such state law. My suggestion is that there is some upgrade of the water system. It should include the equipment necessary to add fluoride only to water that is pumped south of the border. Sincerely, Mike Zorro. And with each of these comments, I did reply to the uh, the residents submitting it, thanking them for their comments and I clarified that the facility plan is for the wastewater utility and not the water utility. And to that, Mike had a response. Um, I would suggest that rate increases for wastewater be limited to industrial commercials or commercial users only, as this is where the additional demand is coming from. And then the sixth and final comment came from Cheryl Hengelbeld. She says, hello, I would like to voice my opposition to the proposed $42 million water pollution control upgrades. According to your proposal, there are options that would cost approximately half as much and there didn't seem to be a valid reason not to go that route. My water bill is very high already and I am not interested in any more rate hikes that are not absolutely necessary. Thank you, Cheryl Hengelbeld, Beloit resident. So those comments are all included in the facility plan that you have before you tonight to consider for adoption. Um, also some unofficial comments were included as well, which were just copies of the Facebook posts. I'm not sure if you want me to read through those ones or not, seems how they were not submitted via the actual uh, means of submitting comments on the facility plan.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you for your report, much appreciated. At this time, the public hearing is open. Would the clerk treasurer please provide any public, any other public input received?
I did not receive any additional input.
I did not receive any additional input.
Okay. Would anyone else wishing to speak in favor or oppose, please come forward at this time? Final call. Would anyone wishing to speak in favor or oppose, please come forward. The public hearing is now closed. Can I have a motion to approve the resolution?
Counselor Prushel will make that motion.
Moved by Counselor Prushel. Is there a second?
Counselor Keys will second.
Second by Counselor Keys. Now we'll move forward with questions and discussion on the motion. Vice President Anderson, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
None at this time.
Counselor Blakely, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, I do not. Thank you.
Counselor Forbeck, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, I do not.
Counselor Forbeck, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, I do not.
Counselor Keys, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
I do. Thank you. More just to help, if Bill could help clarify, because I really do empathize with the financial struggles right now, especially in the time of COVID. And as far as the reasons for this upgrade, it does appear that much of the areas we're looking to invest in has reached its kind of end of operational life. Is that, is that correct?
That's correct. A lot of the industrial wastewater equipment has a design life of roughly 20 years, 25 years, and a lot of it's been there for 28 years. By the time we would actually start replacing the equipment, it'd be right about 30 years. And we did a very thorough evaluation. We don't want to be frivolous with our ratepayers' money, and we are taking all of the concern seriously. And as we go through the design phase, we will evaluate different manufacturers and different types of equipment to make sure we get the most cost-efficient upgrades that we can that will still meet the needs of the treatment.
Thank you. I very much appreciate that. And then what would be the consequences of inaction? It's my understanding there's mandates from the state as far as the wastewater that we put back into the freshwater systems. Do you mind just clarifying if we don't act, what might happen as far as the water quality or DNR compliance?
Yep. If we, if we don't act and upgrade some of our equipment, we'll start violating our discharge permit. And once you have so many violations, DNR would end up giving us a consent order, forcing us to do the upgrades, and fine the city along with forcing us to pay for the upgrades.
Okay. Thank you very much. And then as far as just paying for this and rate increase, we will be able to absorb more from residential and industrial growth, but will the, does industry pay the same rates then as individual residents? So if they use more, they will in fact be absorbing more and paid more as well?
So our industries have a much higher rate than our residents do based off of their usage. And what we're going to do as we go through the design phase is we will break out what portion of the cost of the upgrades we feel go, should go to each customer class based off of actual numbers of how much pollution's coming from, or how much wastewater is coming from a residential house compared to an industry, and we'll look at breaking any rate impacts out accordingly. So if we say that 40% of this is coming from industry, we're going to look to try to put 40% of the cost towards industry.
Okay. Thank you very much for that, and no further questions.
And we are evaluating other outside funding sources, focus on energy grants. We're going to apply for an EDA grant, and then principal forgiveness through the Clean Water Act, or Clean Water Loans.
Thank you. I really appreciate, and I do have a quick comment, and I appreciate the investment in the more environmentally-minded operation, so thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Keys. Counselor Levy.
No, I don't have any questions.
Counselor, I hope I didn't cut you off, Counselor Levy. Counselor Prushel.
I want to thank Counselor Keys for covering just about everything I was going to ask plus a little, so that was well done, and your answers were great, Bill. Again, I wanted to make sure that everybody understands this. There's two things about this. This is a required document, required to adopt as a planning process by the state, if I remember that correctly. Am I correct, Lori, or Bill?
Yes, for any major upgrades, we do have to have a planning document in which we do the evaluation of the equipment and evaluate different alternatives for the upgrades on a 20-year present worth, so they're kind of in an apples-to-apples comparison.
Okay. And a lot of this is driven, as Counselor Keys, you know, explained through her questions, by the need to maintain our facility that is now approaching 30 years old. And it was an important part of our future back in 90, whatever, 92, when this all started to be built. I mean, if we hadn't done that, we would not be where we are now. It's a visionary effort to put this kind of plant where it is, doing what it does, and it set the stage for a lot of our success. We've had for everywhere from carrying ingredients to kettle to Hormel and Frito-Lay's expansion, inside biosystems, or whatever it's called now, Genicore. Anyway, I just wanted to make that clear, that we need to maintain this, and it's come that time to start that effort. And I appreciate, I know staff, and I know everybody's heart is going to break out how the charging comes about based on the usage. There's valid statements that, yeah, a lot of the drivers for the expanding, if there's expanding capacity needed, comes from industry, not from the households. But our households are not sitting still either. We have, we have new households coming online now that are being built now, and hopefully more will be built in the future. So anyway, I just wanted to bring that up. That's just commentary. Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Lori.
Thank you, Counselor Prushel. And now I have a comment to add. Having access to clean water is critical, especially since we all use it every day. I truly appreciate the comments from residents, but sadly, we have seen what can occur when appropriate resources are not spent on water issues. So thank you, Bill, and the city staff for helping us to be proactive with our future. At this time, there is a motion and a second to approve the resolution. I will ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Vice President Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Blakely.
Aye.
Counselor Forbeck.
Aye.
Counselor Keys.
Aye.
Counselor Levy.
Aye.
Counselor Prushel.
Aye.
President Duncan.
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously. Item 12B is the presentation of the proposed 2021 operating, library, and capital improvement budgets.
At this time, we will have Eric Miller, our finance director, who will present the proposed budget. There will be no action on this item tonight. Eric, the mic. Eric, the mic. Just give us a second to get set up. Welcome, Eric.
Hi, thank you. So, good evening. We began the budget process nearly five months ago with the capital improvement requests, and since that time, we met with department and division heads to go through the requests as well as their operating budgets line by line in order to present a balanced proposed So the total budget for all funds is $99.4 million, which is about 8.84% higher than what it was in 2020. The general fund budget was $34.2 million, or just over 4% increase from 2020. And then all of the enterprise funds combined is coming in at about $19.9 million, or just So here is a breakdown of the total budget, which shows a high-level summary of changes by major fund type. More detail will be presented later on in the presentation. And the general fund and special revenue funds are the driving forces behind the increases, while the internal service funds and capital improvement budgets are showing the reductions. You can see down at the bottom there is a total of 0.84% that you saw on the first slide, or $830,000 total increase from last year. The special revenue funds are primarily made up of TIF districts, as well as the library and some other funds, but the TIDs generally are the driving forces behind the special revenue funds. Personal property aid and increment make up the majority of that particular increase. And the internal service funds is mainly made up of our health insurance fund, which you're seeing a decrease there due to some lower health insurance claims experience that we had in 2020. For capital improvements budget, we're seeing a decline in the overall budgets because we reduced the amount of the borrowing, as well as fewer vehicle replacements being purchased next year. So some of the budget highlights in regards to positions or personnel. For obvious reasons, we decided that we added an emergency manager coordinator position. This position is funded by multiple funds, not just in the general fund. We also had a full year of the fire chief in the budget this year due to the timing of the recruitment in 2020. We only had nine months in there, so we did see a slight increase in the fire salary line items. The PD is currently piloting a nuanced law enforcement voice recognition software program with hopeful full implementation in 2021. And by doing that, it created some savings by potentially eliminating the need to replace two part-time vacant records clerk positions. Overall, there were some just minor changes in the employee allocations that we typically look at each year to try to accurately reflect what the people are actually working on. And so we didn't really have many changes this year going into 2021 like we normally So some other non-personnel highlights are the state shared revenue and expenditure restraint. As of today, the shared revenue estimates for both 2020 and 2021 are projected to come in at the full allocation. However, we don't really fully know that that's exactly what's going to happen, so we are planning at this point to receive those funds, and then we'll make any further adjustments as we see fit, once we hear final words from the state. Most likely would occur in January of 2021. In fact, the highway aids I have here is flat. We did receive notice that we'll actually receive a 5% reduction in our state highway aids, our general transportation aids, which is the equivalent of about $75,000. So that's how quickly some things are changing as information is coming from the state. Another reduction that we're seeing is in the personal property aid. This, though, is more of just a correction of an adjustment that was paid by the state in 2019. They miscalculated the way that the personal property aid was to be made, and they're coming back and making, kind of making it good. We were overpaid $75,000 in our general fund in 19, so they're going to reduce it by $75,000 in 2021. Now, it's basically a flat or a zero impact in the general fund because the way that the state levy limits work, we are allowed to add that $75,000 to the general fund tax levy, so it's a net zero. Net new construction increased up to $195,000 from $123,000. The $195,000 represents about $217,000 into our general fund, and majority of the net new construction increase is accredited to the Amazon project. That was only partially assessed, so we'll see the rest of the benefit of that construction in 2022. The assessed values and the equalized values both increased 1.27% and 8.9%, respectively. That's very average growth for assessed values, but that's tremendous growth in the equalized value side of things. There's another slide later on toward the end of the presentation where I'll talk a little bit more about the assessed values and equalized values. There is a current revale that is underway. We're doing partial work in 2020 and 21, and in hopes to have a full revale done in 2022. The municipal property tax levy increased by 2.72%, 100,000 of which is attributed to the debt service. And of course, we've been living under levy limits for about 15 years now, and those are not going away anytime soon, unfortunately. So each year, we do take a look at our fees and user charges, and we try to accurately reflect the cost, or at least recapture some of the partial costs of providing that service. So various fees were analyzed and adjusted, some of which were the right-of-way permits, the erosion control permit, and as well as looking at some of our shelter rental fees. Aside from the general fund, the utility funds also are proposing a wastewater 3% increase, like we just talked about with Bill's projects. That, of course, is a part of a much larger project, as we'll see in the future, and of course, is to expand critical infrastructure of the wastewater utility. We currently are undergoing a comprehensive water rate study. We have yet to submit the application, but we're working on the application. If we can get the application submitted sometime by the end of the year, we're anticipating rates to go into effect around October 1 of 2021. Of course, these rates will help to achieve replacement of some vital infrastructure, and of course, the end game of anything related to the water utility is to be able to provide clean and safe drinking water, as President Duncan mentioned earlier. So we are on target at this point to hit that October 1 of 2021 date. We don't have a solid estimate on what that rate would be as of yet, because we have yet to submit the application, but we're working on getting that accomplished. So here is the general fund revenues, broken out by category. The proposed general fund revenues did increase by approximately 4%. Taxes are the primary driver of the overall increase here. $512,000 of that amount is actually the result of the transit levy being reallocated to the general fund due to the CARES Act funding that was implemented during the pandemic, which provided CARES dollars to the transit utility, which allowed them to use that for both operating and capital projects. Fines and forfeitures were lower. Fines and forfeitures were lower due to municipal court revenues. Those had direct impact on the amount of, basically, the amount of tickets that were being written. The expenditure restraint and personal property aid payment correction account for the intergovernmental revenue reduction. And investment earnings are being offset by a positive market adjustment due to the fact that the portfolio is actually bringing in a higher rate of return than what interest rates would be. So, therefore, there's a positive market adjustment, which is creating an increase in investment revenue. Miscellaneous revenues are partially made up of charge-back revenue from tax settlements such as Woodman's and CARRY. And without the transit reallocation, the increase would have been approximately 2.5%. So, here is a nice graphical representation of the general fund revenues. And as you can see, that 60%, almost 60% of the general fund is being provided by state government intergovernmental aids. You can see that the taxes only make up about 31% of our overall revenue for the general fund. So, here are the expenditures related to the general fund. You can see that we are increasing there 4.909%. That's the same as the revenues. That's how we're able to present a balanced budget. And the finance and admin services budget increase represents additional costs related to multiple things, one being the assessors division, in order to work on the ongoing revaluation that I mentioned earlier. There's also some built-in needed capacity for when we close out a TIF district, which enables us to still maintain our expenditure restraint categories in order to receive that funding. And so, we also house program funding here, which allows for easier distribution or reallocation to different departments. The majority of the increase here is that one-time transit transfer of tax levy into the general fund. When you look at other departments, you have a series of increases and decreases that comprise of a multitude of factors that drive each one. For example, the city manager's budget shows a slight increase, which is where a portion of the emergency management coordinator is housed. The city attorney's department there is a change simply in a health insurance election. The cost of the premiums can create a significant difference in the budgets, and that just happens to be one of them. The IT increase is related to a reallocation of phone archiving expenses, where we used to allocate all of those to the different general fund categories, but we decided to house all those in the IT department, so that we can track them more efficiently. Police and fire, the primary increases in those two departments is related to the post-65 health insurance costs for their retirees. Those line items alone can drive the increases single-handedly. Otherwise, you have minor decreases in community development, public works, economic development, and human resources. So, again, just another graphic representing the general fund expenditures. And combined, you can see that public safety makes up just over 60% of the general fund expense. This is a very typical distribution of funds across the state. They generally are in that 60% to 65% range. So, we are right in normal, right in line with normal budgeting. Public works makes up about 17%, again, very common. So, the proposed special revenue funds, again, like I mentioned, are the TIF districts, different grant funds, the library, solid waste and recycling. All of these funds combined account for 3.5% increase, or about just over $500,000. The two items alone I mentioned earlier, the TID number 10, personal property aid increase, is about $250,000, and the increment for TID number 13 is 200. So, combined, those are 450 of the $500,000 increase. Increment values will change once we receive the final taxing jurisdictions certified levies. Those usually don't come in until November, so we'll get the final increment numbers then. Either way, all of our TIF districts are very healthy and cash-flowing. And the sooner we can close those, the more base we can get into the tax rules. The proposed enterprise funds, 1.76 combined. These are made up of golf course, cemetery, transit, the water utilities, and ambulance funds. A very modest increase when you look at all of those funds combined. The primary factor here, of course, is the wastewater utility at the 3% fee increase, which is proposed to help the improvements and the capacity upgrades. And we already mentioned the water utility rate study. That had a very minimal impact in 2021, based on the timing of when that would be implemented and when we actually bill and collect. So, there would be virtually no increase in 2021 for water. The transit, as I mentioned, did receive CARES Act funding that will be used for both operating and capital expenditures. Transit received about $1.8 million from the federal government in the CARES Act allocation, which has proved very significant in being able to provide some much-needed capital improvements without the need for local match. The proposed internal service funds are comprised of municipal insurance, our health and dental insurance, and the fleet maintenance fund. This is a decrease, which is primarily driven by the reduction in overall health insurance claims. So, this includes both actives and retirees, and the retirees are mostly the public safety employees. So, there's still a pretty significant negative fund balance based on prior year's excess claims. So, we're still working on bringing that down by keeping the premiums steady for 2021. We're also keeping the premium contributions by employees at 10% as well. So, there's no change in terms of premiums or contributions proposed for 2021, which tells us that the experience for 2020 was such that we could do that and still feel like we were going to bring that deficit down. So, we were comfortable with that. One of the other big things in this fund is the workers' comp premiums, and they continue to decline based on our improved mod factor. And for those that don't know what that means, a mod factor is basically a multiplier of how much you're paying in premiums. And so, it's very important to note that we went from 1.22% in 2018 down to 0.65% projected in 2021. So, instead of paying $1.22 for every dollar of premium that we paid for workers' comp insurance, we're now paying 65 cents on the dollar. So, when you put numbers to it, which shockingly enough I did, this means that we're paying $165,000 less than we did last year. And when you look at the cumulative savings from when our mod rate was 1.22 to 0.65, we've saved over $1 million in workers' comp premiums. And I just, I kind of have to give David Niedfeld a bit of a shout-out here for really taking over that program and presenting that to staff and getting that staff buy-in to be able to get us to that point. And it's interesting to note that CivMIC, who is our insurance carrier, when David came on, they told him that 1.22% was the highest of all CivMIC members. And now, at 0.65, we're tied for the lowest. So, that happened in a three- or four-year turnaround, which is pretty remarkable. So, I just wanted to give him a little bit of props there. Proposed debt service fund shows a very minor increase of a half of a percent, or $30,000. These are just payments that come due based on the amortization schedules that we put together with our financial advisors, Ellers, during our general obligation bond issuances. $100,000 was actually increased in the levy due to debt service. And it's important to note that general obligation debt is exempt from the tax, the levy limits, the state levy limits. They are exempt. Proposed capital projects funds showed a decrease of $670,000, or just over 6%. We're estimating about $9 million in capital improvement, in our capital improvement plan, which is a decrease of about $436,000 just in the CIP. Funding for those projects are $4.2 million of geo-debt and mostly bonds and notes, 2.1 of fund balance, 1.4 million of state and federal aids, which would be grants most likely for street infrastructure projects, 1.2 million in special assessments and other. The projects include 5.6 million in infrastructure, 2 million in capital equipment, a million in buildings and grounds, and 200 in economic development projects. So, we reduced the size of the borrowing from approximately 5.5 million down to $4.2 million for 2021. So, here is that property tax levy, shows an increase of 2.72% over 2020. It's a total of $435,000. And here's where you can really see the change in the levy that I was talking about earlier, with the transit being moved up to the general fund. You can see the reduction in that levy. And that, of course, is gonna be supplemented by the CARES Act funding. The total tax rate is just over 2% increase, or .237 cents per thousand dollars of assessed value. And here is a graph showing where the rates have been over the last five years. Again, very modest increases when you look at it. It's a very stable rate environment in the city. We've increased only 46 cents since 2016 collectively. So, again, that's a pretty stable rate structure. So, here's the graph that I was talking about earlier in terms of our assessed and equalized values. And you can really see how the equalized values have exceeded the assessed values over the last two years. This has a direct impact on our debt capacity, as well as the increment values in our TIF districts. So, that's very good news when we see those increases in our equalized values. Those are provided by the state, and it's basically saying that those are what our market values are. So, those are, that's a good number to see. However, the negative impact of those is that when you don't see the corresponding assessed values increase, then you see a lower assessment ratio, which is telling us that we have a little bit of value that's left out on the table, that would help bring those tax rates down a little bit more if we were able to capture that. So, that's what we're working on now with the revow. We currently have a contract in place with our assessor. And so, we're doing preliminary work in both 20 and 21 to have the full revow done in 2022, which would then have the impact on the 2023 budget. So, just as a way to step that forward, so you understand exactly when you'll see those rates come into effect. Again, the rates are relatively flat, and they are gonna be heavily impacted based on any new construction that we get. Again, I mentioned Amazon earlier. That will be finished up in 2020. So, we'll see the full impact next year, in 2022. So, the next steps are, a week from today, we have the council workshop that will begin immediately following a closed session at the Beloit Library Community Room at 10 o'clock on Monday. Two weeks from tonight, we'll be right back here at 7 o'clock for the public hearing. And then, two weeks after that, we'll bring back the budget one last time for your consideration for adoption. And that is all I have for my presentation tonight. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have or comments.
First, I want to start off, and I guess end off by saying, thank you, Eric, and your team, for your hard work with the finance report. You make it look easy. You explain easily. But I know it took a lot of hard work. So, with that said, what we will do is I'll go down the list of counselors, and we'll take some questions, beginning with Vice President Anderson. Vice President Anderson, do you have any questions?
No questions, but just thank you, Eric. I know this is probably about your favorite time of year, so, great work. I know we'll get the full nitty-gritty details from you soon, but once again, thank you for all the stuff you've been doing.
Counselor Blakely, do you have any questions?
Only to say, thank you very much to our intrepid Finance Director, Eric Miller, and your staff for working so hard to pull together this very, very clearly explained report. And I look forward to our workshop next Monday. Thank you.
Counselor Forbeck, do you have any questions?
No questions, no questions, no. I imagine I'm going to have some next week, but thanks, Eric.
Counselor Keys.
No questions right now. I look forward to the budget workshop, and thank you, Eric, for all your work and your team's work.
Counselor Levy.
Yeah, Eric, I was just wondering if we could start that presentation over again. I had a, no, I'm just kidding. Good job to you and your staff. I just wanted to thank you and your staff for doing a great job. And I'd just like to see everybody almost pass out on this thing when I say stuff like that. So, it's, I look forward to Monday, so, thank you.
Appreciate that, Kevin.
Kevin, I gotta say, the look on Eric's face, he was ready to get started, too. He was ready to go. Counselor Preschel.
Well, I'm looking forward to the workshop. I'm looking forward to seeing you all for the first time in months. And also to Eric and Lori, too, for all the staff for making finance interesting to the old guy who never once got near the business building at UW Whitewater. And that was my choice. You do a remarkable job, and the presentation is just something I find interesting to read, which I can't believe I'm saying. Maybe I'm sick. Anyway. Thank you again, Eric. I will look forward to seeing you next Monday.
Yeah, and then I'll end with my comment. You answered my question. It came at the very end. I was gonna ask you about sharing the budget timeline for members of the public and when they can comment, and you shared that, so thank you. And the date that I saw for the public hearing was 7:00 PM here at City Hall on October 19, 2020. So, job well done, Eric, tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, this time, I will now accept a motion to adjourn. Is there a motion?
So moved. This is Preschel.
Moved by Counselor Preschel. Is there a second?
Second by Blakely.
Second by Counselor Blakely. Any discussion? Hearing none? With all in favor, please say aye.
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 We are now adjourned. This ends our council meeting for this evening. Thank you all.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night. Good night, everyone.
Good night.